This is Monday, quarter here at the Monday board meeting. 1:24, it's number 11 for second. Victoria Boninoff and Rick Geiger are unable to attend this meeting, so it's a beauty. We'll take notice. Also, the Tom Myers will be joining us later, the joint officer. So that's, we're all set. Great, okay, so let's just acknowledge who's present.
Hannah Farber.
Jessica Giles.
John Albers.
And then this is Tony Morse, clerk. This attorney, Guy Proh, representatives of MRB, and also representatives of the cabinet. And the public. Okay, so now, Tammy, do you have the minutes?
I sent them to you, but no, I did not have them.
Okay, I mean, we can pass those. There was no minutes from last meeting, as we say. It wouldn't be called more danger in the middle of the between, since there was no motion and activity. So we'll just approve the minutes next meeting. So then regarding this draft agenda, does anyone have any additions to the agenda for this evening?
No.
I am going to make a deletion then. I am actually going to die, don't cry. But I'm gonna push off that brief that I wanted you to give while one of the other members would be here.
Yeah, four.
Yep, okay, so we're gonna scratch that. Which brings us straight to an update on MRB.
Sure. Leave the board looking for a simple overview of where we are. MRB group, every application, as part of, I take that back. This application, submitted to you guys a while ago when we went to the seeker. Every time they submit a revised set of plans to you, it's worth to MRB group review. So the last set of plans that we've all received and seen was dated in June 22, 2018, which we provided revised comma letter dated August 22, 2018. In that letter, we have something like 35 comments, let's say, which are geared towards what we consider preliminary comments. Things that we still believe are outstanding, things that we've been discussing both with this board and under the applicant, things that we believe need to be addressed prior to any decision being reviewed, excuse me, by this board as part of preliminary approval, if we want to get to that. As part of that, we still have, what we've identified as comments that can be addressed as part of the final plan approval. The things that are typically associated with the final site plan subdivision checklists that aren't necessarily needed for the design part, but more of the final documents. We have, let's say, twenty-some odd comments remaining there. Of course, we're likely gonna have more depending upon whatever revisions we get on the subsequent plans that ultimately get submitted both to this board and to us for review based on these discussions that we've been having most recent meetings. So I think, from my standpoint, that's where we are in terms of our review of this one. As it relates to one of the other items that we've been working with the village on is road cross-section. So we had a conversation with, I provided the handout to all the board members and I also provided the board the current village cross-section that has been outdated. So we were tasked with coming up with what we believe is the most accurate or our suggestion for terms of road width and road thickness to meet the build's spec updated. So what we did is we provided what we've been using for most municipalities that we're involved with. The main reason is, one, it exceeds the New York State DOT threshold for thickness. So long-term maintenance and care by the municipalities, we feel it's less of an impact in the long term. So it's a better product ultimately. The differences in our thickness versus the village's current thickness is we talk about how the installation, we have what we call lifts, so the compaction and lapses in the material that we're suggesting is different than what the village's current requirements are, which are outdated. Ours have been updated in five with the current rights of today.
Okay.
The width of our pavement meets what the current requirements are for the village. We've actually road width, the edge of pavement, edge of pavement. The shoulder is where we defer. We are suggesting a smaller shoulder because it's a village environment. I don't think you need a six-foot-wide shoulder width, but that's not our call. This has been forwarded to the DPW superintendent for their review and interpretation, and we have not yet received an approval for it.
And can you just do that little bit of work for us? You're suggesting a smaller shoulder width of six feet as opposed to?
A total, it'll be a total of six feet shoulder width as opposed to 12 foot.
Okay.
But a 22-foot-wide tri-lane, which is what the current standards are, and I wouldn't suggest reducing those.
Twenty-two foot wide, okay. And that's being, that's currently set with DPW?
That's up.
To get comment back, okay.
Correct. Now, DPW, as I mentioned, has ability to waive these requirements. Even if he prefers to go this route, he can still waive them on a project-to-project basis.
I didn't hear very well. Did you say 20 feet or 25?
So the total width will be 28 feet wide of pavement. We're proposing a 22-foot-wide pavement driving dials with a three-foot shoulder on both sides. Currently, the plans that have been provided to us only propose a 22-foot-wide width pavement. So we should best remind you that you put three feet on both sides.
Yes, okay.
The right-of-way wouldn't change, it's still 50 feet, and we wouldn't be altering that. Depending on what you fit with an active and wider pavement in some areas, in that same area. The other detail that we provided to you on the site sheet is what we consider to be a collector road, a more highly impacted road, a larger road, a wider road. The thickness of that one defer, it's a little thicker in terms of its material. That is not what we're proposing as part of this. So for, this is what, we're not anticipating this proposed development using, utilizing that road. A collector road. It's more of a larger impactful road that has higher density of vehicles traveling, more commercial-sized vehicles traveling.
So this is, right, so the page two is nearly correct on some things you're planning.
Exactly. Ultimately, if the village remembers what that, if they would have substantial, they're gonna be able to afford, kind of, the projects.
Okay.
But those are the variations that we saw, kind of, more of a variation will be saw currently that resides in the village, that the village owns and maintains in terms of the type, two types of roads that we could see. Collector road and then the local subdivision road.
Okay.
The other roads that we are, which are the village and state roads, which are not yours.
Right.
So we provided those two cross-sections for the DPW to review and approve essentially, or modify to their liking. But the one that most currently reflects, the one that we're suggesting to use for this project is our local road subdivision road that we typically require in most subdivisions. And those are the projects.
Okay.
Do we ask a question?
Yeah, yeah.
In the summary that you sent before, I think the advice was that there should be concrete curb throughout the subdivision. Is that true?
So most villages have concrete curbs that they use, or have been sold. Those are two very various. Our detail suggests we give the option of what it would look like if it had a curb or if it just had a shoulder, being that we have both currently in the village. We both see a curb scenario and we see one which is a shoulder scenario. So both are usable. Both are options that those can use. Both are options that you want to continue to be, to use, being that that's the current conditions right now.
Yeah.
We also, in one of the, in the collector road detail, give the option of gutters. I don't foresee any reason why you guys would want gutters, but it's possible.
Yeah, that's the reason I asked the question. The curving plays a role in controlling drainage.
Can.
It can.
Yes.
Exactly. But it certainly gives a different look to the development. And the development takes on a nerve quality or a subjective quality as opposed to the rural, as we're used to around here. So how does one make that decision?
So ultimately, it comes to DPW superintendent's decision, because they're the ones maintaining that road. Whether it's curb, no curbs on it. What's being proposed is a no curb scenario, I think in most cases where there's a village road. The reason is, they're utilizing the drainage required to meet some of the drainage requirements. They're providing some swells for infiltration purposes. So if a curb was there, they would have to bring the drainage to a different location or have more inlets. And this way, they're using the open channel proposal to kind of meet the DC requirements in that regard.
Yeah, Lance, if I could just correct, we're actually proposing a curb on one side, that will pitch into the road, then the machine drain off into a swell on the other side. So it's, we have a minimal curb on one side of the street.
And curving is useful because it's more protection for pedestrians? You're, that, I mean, what, do I have a curb anything?
Maybe, maybe. It all depends where your pedestrians are walking.
So what's the purpose of curving?
It's just, obviously, it helps with the maintenance of the road in terms of cleaning. Provides a curb scenario where you can control runoff in a manner that's easier to maintain in some instances. But, and the ones where we have shoulder, it all depends on what we have, where you have the roof, because of our curving.
Okay. But it sounds like that's a DPW determination anyway.
The reason is, is because of the maintenance obligations. They get damaged, the snowplows and that sort of, so it becomes a maintenance obligation for them. A lot of municipalities have gone away for that one.
How do you arrest skateboarders? I haven't heard of that. Okay, sorry. Okay, Hannah, do you have any questions about that document differently? So Tom Myers has joined us. The meeting just started, so MRB put out a document that you might have already seen. This has been given to DPW just about the cross-section and road, it's the basic, that's super table.
It doesn't mean that you guys can't provide suggestions in which way you would like to see it go, for whatever reasons that you have. It just means that DPW is the one that's gonna determine whether we do it, because they have a maintenance policy.
Yeah, okay.
But it does, again, you have the rights to suggest one or the other for whatever reasons that you have.
Right, and I think, John, you know, I'm hearing this notion of most of the streets, except for Main Street, don't have curving. I guess only Side Long and South Street does. It's raised up, but certainly there is a feel aesthetically of walking in a rural village housing lot versus curving. If you have anything to say. Actually, do you want to say anything about curving? Do we have, so also, while we're just on this agenda, I think this is an opportunity for fellow board members if they have access to or engineer their other questions that you would like to ask them, but anything you approve for it. Or for it later. All the color. Okay, great, any more words?
No.
Okay, so then, great, so let's begin with an update from the app. And I know that there's probably some information you'd like to share.
Well, thank you, thank you Lance. It's helpful kind of remembering the full context of where we're at in the process. We are in the site plan subdivision review queue. We, after seeker, the seeker completion, the seeker progress, we're kind of focused on maybe 10 or 15 issues that come out of that as kind of the first steps. And the goal here remains, get some feedback on big picture issues that are gonna affect the design. And then we will come back and go back to Lance's letter from August and do an updated supplemental for the board's consideration. And hopefully, at that point, we're kind of far along in terms of the overall design and we generally getting close. So the items we still have kind of left on the list that we have developed and discussed. Roads, the access entrances and road design. Nursery school drive, nursery school drive and parking for that. Pedestrian circulation. Architecture, orientation of buildings, and open space and vegetation, and construction data. Our goal for tonight is really to get through enough of those, anything that really is gonna impact design, that we can hopefully come back next month with a revised, updated concept plan. That's at least our goal. But that's ambitious. There's a lot to get, really a lot to discuss. So the team is here, and I won't make a re-introduce themselves now, you know them all. But as we come up with individual pieces, folks who are the expert few will come up and address and discuss. There are some updates since the January 3 meeting. You had given us feedback that we should consider area variances from the zoning board appeals for parking and for setbacks. Tuesday, on Tuesday, we filed our applications with the ZPA. For an area variance based on setbacks of 25 feet, as we discussed, and parking of 1.2 per residential rental units, right? If not the whole thing, just for the residential rental units. So that's filed. Next meeting is Monday, and we'll take it from there. Obviously, if their answer is no, you think that's a bad idea, then those design options are off the table. But if the answer is yes, then those design options, great options for you as you work through final plans.
And so you made it to their agenda and that'll be reviewed.
I don't think their agenda's been set, but we have filed.
How that works?
Agenda is not set, and I will post a direct agenda.
But their, I mean, I'm, so I'm not actually, great, you were asking. Yeah, I'm just like, oh, do they, great, okay, so Monday for Monday. Okay.
Presumably, they'll return all the applications completed, sign a public draft.
And since we have so many really wonderfully invested members of the community who love planning, they can send that meeting here in the village hall on Monday at 6 o'clock if they'd like to keep fairness to the conversation.
Okay, and we also applied for discussion use permit for the nursery school per the zoning office's determination from December. So that's in process as well.
Okay.
Figured we'd do it all at once. All right, the other development is relates to road access. So we had approached, based on the feedback and some of the concerns about where South Street, where the project enters South Street, and the northern option and the things we've discussed, we had approached both of the property owners surrounding those, the current access point, see if anybody would be interested in selling the property. The idea that that would give us more flexibility and alleviate some of the concerns of proximity to house. We did have success with the owner of 50 South Street. So today at 2 o'clock or so, I received a signed contract that locks up that property. So that creates a new option for an access point. It would allow a shift of that southern, of the south, up to the north. It's not a great shift. We'd be demoing the, there's a little storage shed, I think, over there. We'd be demoing that and kind of shifting to the north. It creates about a 40-foot separation from the house that's to the south, where I think we have 18 feet now, or something.
23 feet 11 inches.
23 11.
Is it currently standing right now?
To the edge, to the southern edge of road, to the nearest corner of the southern residence, is 23 feet 11 inches.
So it goes up by about 17 feet, about doubled.
Yeah.
So this afternoon, and I apologize for filing this late, but I did want to get in front of you. So I sent a letter saying just that, about my lock of the property, and showing you a plan that Ryan had come up with that shows what it would look like or where that would be. And this is not, I want to stress this for everybody, this is not a formal amendment, yeah. All we're doing is giving you another option, because we know access is a big issue. It does kind of open things up a little bit, allows for a larger right-of-way. Remember, we have a variance for the right-of-way to Pennsylvania Avenue. That's why that can be less than 50 feet. But the one on the South Street side was an average 49 feet, which was not consistent with the village code requirement, so we provide, propose that as a private access. We move it and increase the width, we can make that a public road again to the extent that there's concerns that some folks wanted that to be a public road. So options, which is really great topics. We do have, maybe not everybody got to their computer, so we brought some extra copies.
Thank you.
Lauren will be happy to share those. So those are the big things, and I think with that, we would suggest access is probably the best place to start, and Andy and Ryan are here to delve in.
Get there with me for a moment, just a few boards up for everyone to finish it.
I'm also distributing an 11 by 17 handout with 3 dollars.
There you go.
That's the variance requirement.
No, that's just a letter for the option.
Okay, so as Adam had introduced his number of topics we're gonna try to get to tonight, it's a pretty ambitious list, but paramount concern at the last meeting, obviously, it was meeting this is road based access. So starting with the new information that we're presenting, I just want to explain once again in a little finer detail what Adam had started to introduce. In acquiring the lot, which 50 South Street stands on, it provides us the opportunity to increase the right-of-way.
I can't hear you.
I can't hear.
We can though, so you're welcome to come closer to the terrace in front and hear people speaking up. Okay, so can the board hear him? Okay, great.
I can, you know, to talk loud, and I'm happy to do so.
Great.
As my colleagues in an open office will attest to. All right, so the acquisition of the property at 50 South Street provides the opportunity to increase the right-of-way to be 50 feet or greater as necessary as per the regulations for a dedicated public road. In doing that, it also allows the property line to shift to the north. So that's what's increasing the potential right-of-way under one option to your consideration.
And again, I'm sorry, how much is that increase, that shift?
So the shift of the north line is, the total width of the right-of-way as shown in the diagram that you've been provided is 58 feet. Previously, it was 49 feet and change.
Right, and it also shifts away from the property line at 52.
So we'll take it one by one. So the right-of-way as shown is 58 feet. The roadway has then shifted to the north. And what we provided you for with is the critical dimension from the closest corner of the 52 South Street residence structure to the southern edge of road, which is now 39 feet 7 inches. Previously, that dimension is presented on the most recent prior. Prior site plan was 23 feet 11.
Thank you, okay.
What we've done in essence is moved the same width road, 20 feet, 15 feet and 8 inches further to the north, further away from the property at 52 South Street. That gives you, you know, a non-paved surface of just shy of 40 feet between the southern edge of the road and the northern edge, which is the northeast corner of the residence at 52 South Street. 40 feet is not insignificant, especially when you think about the fact that we're going before the, this may be a task for a front yard setback of 25 feet. The fact that that is, you know, in access of 25 feet. I'm happy to delve into this further, but there are other issues related to road and access, and I would probably want to open it to your questions and comments specifically to this meeting before moving on to the other items.
So this is the, right, so this is the adjustment that we got this afternoon because the contract just came. So I just asked all my questions about that right now. Did you want to address this feature before we talk about any of the other access points, John or Hannah? You can certainly come back to it, it's not gonna all happen.
As far as the design of this particular road, it seems to work. I guess I have two small questions. One is, if this is showing the 22 feet, we just heard from Lance suggesting that it be 22 plus three feet on each side for shoulders. Also, the other thing being that the sidewalk is directly against the road. I don't know whether that's considered a less severe sort of thing or whether there can be like a tree lawn in between the.
All of those are options. To directly answer your question, there's nothing that precludes the opportunity to provide a true lawn between the back edge of the curved road, a non-curved edge of road and sidewalk. Similarly, the location of the sidewalk could be on the south side of the road, it could be on the north. Our thoughts as an initial offering is that it makes the most sense on the north side of the road as the primary point of interest outside of the subdivision proper, or primarily northbound, being Main Street and the school. And then, tandem to that is the issue of the road width. So this diagram presents as historically we've shown a 22-foot-wide road with five different locations within the site where it pulps out to 26 feet as required for access to fire hydrants. So uniformly, a dedicated public road in all of the site plans that you've been provided as shown a 22-foot-wide road with 26 foot wide means at five select locations that relate to hydrants. If we were to increase the road width, I'm gonna take a tangent just to follow up on the conversation that has begun with Lance at the beginning of this meeting with regards to the myriad of factors to consider when talking about a curved road versus a non-curved road. The first thing, just as a point of clarification, so the design as it stood, this is not regarding this segment of the road, but as a whole. The design as it stood before we walked into the room this evening showed roadway 22 feet that was pitched in one direction. And so the high point of the road was a edge of road without a curb. And the low point of the road, on the low side of the road, had a curb. That, so basically, all the rain that falls on that road and all the water that she flows across that road was hitting a six-and-traced curb and entering into a storm system. And yes, the aesthetics and the kind of common knowledge of what a curved roadway is perceived as is often that of more urban and or suburban as opposed to rural. One alternative to the design as we put forward, and we had these conversations going over a year back now, early on in the life of this project, is whether or not to have a curved condition or not. If you remove the curves from the receiving low sides of the road, so whether it's pitched in one direction or whether it's a high point in the middle and crowned in both directions, basically, in removing a curb, what we then are forced into as a storm management option is to provide swells that convey stormwater, proximity running parallel to the sides of the edge of the road. And what those swells ultimately mandate as you interface with driveways is culverts under those driveways. So there's significant expenditure, just capital, as far as the initial insult of those culverts, but there's the ongoing, in perpetuity, maintenance regime associated with keeping culverts clear debris, et cetera, as they go under the roads. It also necessitates a certain, for lack of a better, less technical term, head height. So there's the thickness of the asphalt of the driveway, there's the diameter of the culvert size to receive what that volume of water is flowing through. And then there's the low point that has to correspond with the problem with that, whatever that size of that pipe is. And I'm sorry, this is getting very, you know, it's technical. At the end of the day, we thought it was a more efficient, cleaner design to provide a curved condition on the receiving side of the road because it really, it basically took the culvert condition out of the situation. And I understand that that's a norm in a myriad of locations throughout the village. It's not to say it's not a legitimate form of stormwater management.
Well, and in this case, help me out, the culvert is the responsibility of the driveway owner to maintain? Or is the village?
No, because in the right-of-way, it would be the village's responsibility.
The village, but then it does affect, your driveway goes over it as a homeowner, and they always heave, and there's either a dip or whatever, and that is the burden of the homeowner. No, that's the burden of the village.
Over, and anything in the right-of-way is the responsibility of the village.
So the driveway doesn't start till you get onto the procedure of the property owners property. That is all, that's all, I'm sure it's all in the right-of-way if you do the culvert.
Interesting, okay.
So secondarily, or related to this. having spent all the time over the last almost two years reading through the subdivision regs and zoning regs, there are multiple references which seem to encourage the use of curbs within street roadway design. So that's another factor in which informs the design that says good for you today. Another factor, which, you know, I'm going to put on my landscape architect's hat. What we've got as a roadway design on both sides, whether it be curved or non-curved today, is an eight-foot, is a standard eight-foot wide tree lawn with three trees planted 40 feet on side. If you were to increase, if you were to remove curbs and increase the shoulder by three feet on each side, my personal professional opinion is, is that you're encouraging illegitimate parallel parking on the side of the road, which all of us who've come to local festivals know that, you know, come grassy time, your front lawn becomes the parking spot for all the people who are not finding other legitimate parking spaces. While that might be a temporary nuisance and an infrequent inconvenience for some, I would also just weigh in on the fact that, you know, first thing, that's reseeding or dirt patches that used to be lawns because of unwanted tire traffic. And secondarily, perhaps taking the real lawn view as a landscape architect, those are tires that are on the critical roots, um, technical term, those roots which are most important, the street trees. So it's for all of these myriad of factors that we developed the roadway section as we have. It's, the minimum travel lane is, you know, the primary travel path of the 22-foot wide to 11-foot wide drivelines is not contested. That's what's been put forward by MRB as the section. We do however, potentially view the three-foot addition of a shoulder as inviting all of these other issues towards the existing design might not. And just to play devil's advocate to my own points, the eight-foot wide tree lawn, the eight-foot wide tree lawn, you could say, well, you've only provided a curve on one side of the road. Why isn't that an issue with your current design? Why wouldn't someone park? Because the width of a car is much more comfortably suited with two of your tires on the three-foot width of a shoulder and two of them in the front lawn versus truly pulling totally off the roadway in its entirety and parking as if you were on cinder blocks in the eight-foot wide tree lawn, which by the way, it's interrupted by many driveways and many street trees, which I'll get to at a later point. But just to really, if that point home, my child might be taken.
Okay, well, while you're pausing for a second, let's hope your child's not been taken.
Oh, well, I'm on my parents' family, so. Now anyhow, so, sorry, medical emergency in the household. Street trees, just to hit that point home as far as, you know, the interruption of parking. 67, for the total length of not including this segment, for the total length of dedicated public roadway, we're proposing 67, we decided to shape trees for it to put on center. I think I've tried to make my most convenient case as to why the roadway design is submerged in the fashion that I have.
Yes, okay, I think that's great. And we'll have access to you next meeting. Tell them if you have something you can attend to at the moment. Yeah, thank you. And one point, we currently own the books in the village, on village roads, you can't parallel, it's actually not legal to park parallel. Yeah, whether or not that gets enforced, it's technically still there. Yeah, on village roads.
It's parking only.
I'm smiling at Tom because it's touching. He's like, I'm enforcing the code or I'm not? What is it?
He's touching about that subject. It's parking only in side yards and established driveways.
So Main Street has an exception with a parking lane, right?
Residential, yes.
That's different, but, so that's interesting. I feel like those are really great points about curving that I haven't talked about.
And I think we understand that we provided the sections to DPW and obviously, I think the next step is everybody kind of feeding back to DPW and having a dialogue, both about pavement width and curving.
So I think what we're hoping to do is get your feedback based on, you know, we had sort of, originally, we proposed this option, originally, we proposed an option of coming down off south at the north end. And then we proposed this option. And I think a lot of the concern of this option was, A, it was very close to the house at 52 and that it wasn't wide enough, didn't meet the width. And I think those were the major concerns with this. It was going to be a driveway, so how would we make sure that the public had access? We would have to grant easements, basically. So we feel like, and then, you know, this road wall, it didn't have all those issues, have other issues. There's a wetland up here, there's a lot of trees we're going to end up having to cut down. Several significant trees, you can kind of see them here. And we also liked the idea of having this walking path, although there was some concern about how it would be lit and whether or not, it really made sense to have a walking path. That was something we thought would be an item of humanity. So what we think, though, I think this is the discussion we would hope to have with you tonight, is that we basically sort of resolved a lot of the issues that we heard with this access by, A, creating now a width that's wide enough to meet the village road standard, the width for access, it's over 50 feet. Also, moving it 15 and a half feet or so away in addition to where it was before, another 15 feet away from 52 South, we're giving them a lot more breathing room to the south there. And so what we'd like, I mean, our preference would be then to keep this, basically turn it into a village road or be built-to-village road steps. We wouldn't have the driveway access issue. It would be the correct width and it would be significantly farther away. That's sort of our proposal to the board, but we'd like some feedback on that before we move on to sort of the next discussion, which is pedestrian access.
Ms. Hannah, what's your reaction?
My initial reaction is just like, oh, this is a little different house, but it does resolve a lot of those issues and then it does also leave those trees, those large trees intact on the north end. I mean, I think there's, there could be something there, but not.
Yeah. What happens to the structure around 50, the house that's currently on 50?
So we don't have to impact this house at all.
And who owns that now? Or it's under contract, the state will go through and lose the owner?
So INHS.
INHS is buying it.
Well, we would buy it, we're not doing it currently, but.
No, that's the agreement that reads to buy the current owner and you then approach with an INHS.
We would buy it and then we would determine, most likely, we would either renovate it and resell it or we might resell it to the town. We haven't really figured all that out, but because we'll own this house, we'll have to decide what to do with it. But we don't have to, we didn't actually think about that. The only thing that really impacted is there's a little removable like armor shed that we would have to take that armor shed down or remove it, but there's no impact to this house.
Can I make a quick comment? Sure, because I know why I'm putting that up.
If we annex the portion of 50 South Street that we need to widen our right-of-way, we will still, that will still become a legal lot in its own.
Right, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, we, yes, this basically gets re-subdivided into a legal lot, so there's some issues.
And I think for me, I was clarifying, and thank you Claudia, is it INHS, is it Claudia Brenner? And what are your intentions?
Yeah, yeah, INHS.
Still figuring out the exact intentions, but we'll look at it.
Okay.
I think the other thing that we get with this option is remember, I think the other really competing option was moving it to the north. And there are some issues as we talked about. The other thing that we keep talking about internally is all of the utilities still need to be addressed for it.
Right.
So we wouldn't really be not disturbing this area if we just moved the road up some more. We certainly have to disturb it because of the utility. That's just the accident. So some real pluses from a design perspective from addressing some of the concerns we heard with that as a new access option.
And so interesting, not choosing in this presentation to split the difference of the gain footage between 52 and 50, but going as far away from 52 as you can, which is not something you have to do.
That was the goal.
Yeah, okay.
And we've had to make a conscious decision on whether that made sense under the circumstances.
Okay.
With INHS owning the house, we care a lot less about that.
Well, as someone, a new owner purchasing something is also a very different reality.
Yeah, they know what they're getting.
John, do you have some comments or?
Well, I still keep hoping to hear a really compelling argument for the northern access way versus the southern one insofar as, it just seems to me that the center of gravity for this, or the magnet for this development is to the south, not to the north. That the people want to get toward the school and/or where the historic center is, where public transportation is and so forth. So in this scheme, you basically have to come back to go out to South Street and then go south.
You mean north?
Yeah, you're back to the challenge.
So you come down here and the sidewalk runs to here.
You think they didn't live on South Street.
You take the sidewalk and then you walk here. Or if we left this, you could walk up the path.
Yeah, yeah, you could definitely walk, no question. In other words, I think it works. I just think that, given my brothers, I would rather be going the...
So, and for that, it's because it's just less time on South Street? Like it's a quicker access point off to the closer, yeah. I have high hopes for this walking path. Again, because I think I've mentioned, I mean, I'm not a walker. And so I think that there's things to consider about that. Will it be passable all year long? I don't know much, but we're having a lot of mulch, shovel mulch, we're going to have these plants and side jobs. So, yeah, like, for that reason, and because it is a wooded and a wetlands and we've mentioned creatures that might enjoy those sorts of areas, to be able to walk through that instead of driving through that, I don't know anything. So I think those would be my comments on this. I understand much better, it sounds like it's a DPW issue anyway, even though we could make some mention and it sounds like the intention is imported everywhere and that would definitely make it feel a bit, you know, more comfortable now, it's specifically for drainage and veteran culverts, which are wacky.
I might just throw in one other observation is that there is an alternative to vertical curving. There could be slope curving. And I don't know whether that's been considered at all, but that does a better job of kind of retaining the flow of the...
Oh, that goes like that?
Of the land.
Maybe the channel?
Yeah, well, where you have a vertical curb like that, instead, you end up with something like that.
Okay, okay.
And it does the same thing as a curb. It captures the water and channels it, but it doesn't have that strong.
Does that require more width and more pavement to make that much more concrete, so more curvaceous?
Yeah, it's a little, it's a little more, whereas a concrete curb is six inches by about four inches. This would be more like a foot.
Yeah.
Something akin to a scupper.
Exactly.
Yeah, I thought it was a boat, Jeremy.
It's in boat, it's in construction, in roadways. It's used a lot, just something, it's a device on a structure to hold water, prevent water. So on a roof, for instance, you can have a flat roof and a scupper all the way around it and that helps collect the water diverted to the drains. That would be something like what Tom's talking about.
The one downside, though, to a slope curb is that it does tend to encourage people to drive over it. When you see a curb, you know, where the trash and tires, you see a sharper edge, that means you want to stay on the curving way, so.
Yeah.
Well, they have their as a...
Clear lines for pedestrian paths, I think, make sense and not misstepping in slant-y areas as a middle agent. It's interesting, but good to know, remind me that there are other...
Okay. Joe, I was wondering if the inference on the 50 South Street section is going to affect the overall layout of the development or you hitting the loop that goes around when you come in?
Yeah, it does not affect the overall development because we have enough room with the nursery school here that we can push this up without impacting the rest of the dwell.
Andy, do you want to ask?
Yeah, just on the curb on one side versus the other, going back to DPW, I agree with Lance and we'll sit down with Dustin and MRB and kind of flesh out all that. We had met in October to review that with Dustin and MRB and he had already kind of approved at least curving on one side and not curving on the other, just a point for us there. He made changes later, I guess, as we looked at his other sections, but just wanted to clarify that, you know, we had a meeting initially and so a single curb on one side has already been fleshed out within the other.
Just to be clear, our cross-section actually shows that scenario.
Yeah, yeah, I was sure the board knew that.
Thanks. Also, I guess we didn't mention the sidewalk, John. I like that this way the most traffic that wants to cross could sort of do so within the development instead of waiting to get to that South Street and trying to get onto the sidewalk. Do you know what I mean? The sidewalk placed where it is, you could choose to access that in the development where there presumably will be less roadway traffic than waiting until you've got to an entrance to get quicker to it. Do you know that there's more, maybe it can cross anywhere you want and certain people will go over and have to go across there? Somehow just, so there's no way to track that?
That's actually our next word, is sidewalks. So what we did was, there was a lot of, there was some question about sort of how do pedestrians get around this development? It's hard to read on just a straight line drawing. Where are the sidewalks? Where's the road? Where's the curving? So what we did was, we just basically highlighted all of the sidewalk network throughout the project. And you'll see, you know, basically, what we wanted to do is allow you to get to all of the homes in the entire development on a sidewalk. And then have, where the sidewalk ends, you'll see these dash lines. Those are safe crossing points where it will be painted, basically, that there's a crossing point. So this shows the sidewalk on the lower path, but we're talking about moving it up to the top. This shows the walking path. And then this shows the sidewalk network to be around the multifamily building. Sidewalk all on this upper side for all of these people who live in these units and then down at the bottom. So that kind of gives you an idea of where all the sidewalk is and how people can get around and...
Is there, so those are paved sidewalks on?
Yes, those are all paved except for the walking path.
Oh, okay. Is there any, is there any trail system? I know in some of the earlier schemes, there was a trail system around some of the green space in the...
We don't have a proposed formal trail system at this point. I think we want to see how that takes shape once it's actually in, but we assume that that's going to actually make for a really nice natural kind of area to walk and that that could be a place for future trails, if it makes sense. But right now, the idea would be that this would just be natural and sort of left as is, and that as long as it's not interfering with the drainage, the stormwater system, people could walk back there, just like you'd walk out in the woods, you know.
Okay.
Joe, other thing?
You go first. Do it.
I'm still concerned about that northern walkway system being mulch or gravel or whatever because it is not going to be passable, it's not... because it is not going to be passable, it's not...
This will be passable during the...
Yeah, I understand that. You know, on the other hand, I still see a lot of importance to that northern carry it there, and I think we're sort of neglecting it by sort of backhanding, oh, put a mulch path in there, who likes, it'll be okay. But A, it's more difficult to maintain. I like the idea of mulch, I like the idea of gravel. It's a very nice system, but it's difficult to maintain, and I think you can do very well with something like an asphalt material that really melts into the landscape in a much more quiet way than concrete, for example. But somehow, it seems to me it needs to be paved in some form that is more maintainable.
So I feel like somehow we're, I feel like there's mixed signals then coming of like, hey, you really want to minimize impervious surface, hey, why don't we, why don't we put some asphalt in there? I don't know, like I'm not trying to be flip, it's maybe it was, but how do we be there? How do we have it be?
Well, I'm just throwing things out, you're throwing things out.
Yeah.
I guess it's up to somebody to think it over and decide. But I, no, I understand what you're saying, but when I say we're putting in, if it's an asphalt walk, we're not talking about maintaining this amount of area.
So it's not very wide, it's very thin, and again, the advantage of, so for example, we walk in the national forest.
Yeah.
There's no paving there.
Yeah.
There's raised planks in places, and you just walk in the snow. But we are in a village here, and so you're sort of wanting to say, no, it'd be nice to have something that could be cleared, that would actually really encourage...
Well, for example, it could be oilstone or something like it's on the Black Diamond Trail, has a maintainable surface.
That's more maintainable than mulch. Okay, okay, I get it.
There's also grading and concerns when you start to put pavement in, eventually if we don't completely regrade this, we may have sections that are too steep for asphalt, or it may become very slippery, and then, you know, you're basically, either it's not to code, or then you're using a ton of salt, or we're putting steps in. So it starts to become a maintenance issue, even if we have it asphalt. I mean, our, so our preference obviously is not to pave this, it's a lot of pavement, it's a lot to maintain, and because we have this access that is going to be maintained, and the village just put sidewalks in, which are going to be maintained, and that this distance that somebody needs to walk is not terribly great. I would understa, if we were talking about miles between these two, I think I can completely agree, but we're talking about several hundred feet. That we kind of get the best of both worlds here, is that, you know, when it gets bad, and if you are, you know, in a wheelchair, or, you know, you have this access, that's going to be cleared and it's going to be safe. And then this is a nice trail that either you can walk through in the snow, if you're inclined to do that, but most likely, this is going to be kind of fair weather, you know, in the thick of three months' period.
John, if you'd have much hiking at Southslicker Woods, they have a, you know, with the treated curves and the chips in between there, and that's a really humid area. I think where you brought up, some places do have planking to do with the wettest parts of the little bridges. I'm not sure if that would require it there, but obviously there's maintenance with anything. Wood chips require refreshing, is that what it is? Lay down new ones, unless you buy the weird treated ones that don't break down, but that's a whole nother deal. And that sort of application, it seems like, real practical.
What's application?
For the trail here?
Yeah.
And, you know, if it's going to be considered a trail, as opposed to a real means of access, like the 50 South.
Yeah. Well, I guess I just see that sort of wood clinking, I think there's a lot of...
Yeah.
But I, on the wetland issue, insofar as this is a trail and is more flexible, well, for a little wetland there, it's more like puddle.
Yeah.
So I wonder how much of an issue that becomes.
This is a designated wetland that has been managed, so we have to stay away from it, and we would have to build basically some type of barrier if we were going to put a road there.
Yeah, I understand a road would be...
But for the path, I don't think it's going to impact the wetland at all. That's the nice thing about the path, is we can basically, we've got a swing away from the wetland completely.
That's what we're trying to do, just keep it away from the wetland, and it's never an issue.
So the road coming in at 50 South would be built to village specs? It sounds like you're planning on eating it to the village?
So the original concept was it was going to be privately maintained by I N H S. This new option, this is the option to go back to the village road as the original concept.
And would that be the only section of roadway there, or the loop? Would that be going to the village?
Yeah, it's side to side.
It's all of the road up here is going to the village.
That's what's currently the concept.
And going out to Pennsylvania also.
So all of that would become part of the road.
And I, maybe it's just my vision, I don't see anything highlighted on the road to Pennsylvania, so there's no sidewalk on that.
And actually, that was a discussion point, so is that still a concept that, does that work, or do we want to see a sidewalk?
I'd like to see a sidewalk there. I understand that sidewalks are expensive, but I also understand grant funding is grant funding, and that happened, and people are walking in Pennsylvania a lot anyway, and certainly kids are. And it is, it is an interesting access point down to Main Street. I mean, it's just, psychologically, right, when we go to 227, or we take stairs for it, or we go to Hector, the difference is very minimal, but psychologically can be huge, and I think that, you would be short sighted to pretend people aren't going to use that anyway, to make it the most safe, and hopeful that there could be more sidewalk in the future to connect. Yeah. Yeah, I agree, there are definitely needs to be sidewalks there, too.
So we can look at a sidewalk on that side.
All right. I think that gives us some good feedback on location, which is the main next step in design. It sounds like there's an open issue, further discussion on it too, particularly that northwest corner that she took on, and I think we can take back what we heard tonight and kind of recruit the design team, see what answers we have to some of those concerns.
And also with, I believe there was a response from Andy, from you, to MRB about the road depth, and what Andy then presented, or Lance presented to us today, so that's all incorporated for future design.
Yeah, I think it'll be fleshed out, we're gonna meet with Dustin, we're gonna figure out what, you know, he wants to see.
Okay.
And the recommendations, and then we'll abide by that.
Okay, and you're all part of that conversation, I'm sure, with, yeah, the papers.
There is a head meeting afterwards, we'll be there.
Okay.
So I guess there was also, in terms of access road, there was discussion about the nursery school in particular, and I think John had some concern about how this was working. And the nice thing about the acquisition of 50 South is that we do have some more room to play back in this area. So there are ways of actually taking this parking lot and putting it in the back of the nursery school lot. But I guess what we wanted to hear about was really what the concern was, and if there were issues about, you know, is it safe? How does it actually work? You know, what were the concerns? Because that would help us then, you know, now that we have this area to sort of think about, you know, maybe we can solve some of those concerns by rearranging this whole lot to put the parking behind the, behind the building, for example.
Which then you would access before the horseshoe?
You would come down the road, and then you'd go into a parking lot that was in the back. It's kind of a traditional parking lot.
Sure.
And then we could also, you know, this doesn't have the new setbacks, but this building and the new setbacks could be moved up closer to the street, which would give you a lot more room in the back, and also, and that would feel a little bit more like the rest of the houses.
Yeah, my concern was, just it seemed so constrained, and the entrance and exits were, you know, they occupied a lot of space. And in earlier form, the entrance to the parking, to the nursery was off of the access drive, which made for very awkward conflict with the intersection. So I, I think, yeah, you, make use of the flexibility that you just bought.
So what does that do? Can you remind me what a play structure associated with a nursery school is?
Right now, it's first gear.
So putting the parking where you just mentioned wouldn't detract from that in any way?
No, not at all.
Okay, or, okay, which would also be something a nursery school might consider doing with this extra space? What does that then do for children's gardens?
Right.
Or all those things? So let's maybe not be short sighted and eager for parking when there could be something else.
One thing to think about, though, too, is a lot of the traffic for the nursery school is pickup and drop off, and I don't know whether it makes more sense to have pickup and drop off of the street for somehow in a parking lot separation.
Having put two children through TCNS on Main Street, it is a parking situation. Anyway, because they're like two and three and maybe, maybe four, sometimes five, so you are always escorting them there. It's short.
Yeah, the fact that the parent has to get out.
Just, yeah, you're shutting the vehicle off, you're getting out, you're making sure there's mittens, hoping they're not screaming and crying and being peeled off of you, but I mean, you know, so I think...
It's clear some type of drop off arrangement needs to be...
Yeah, versus, versus what works very well in our public school here, is it is really very fluid. I mean, there's the drive, there's, okay, see, grab your mittens, okay, hi, and then you go, and that's certainly a flow of food.
But so, I'm sorry. The Racker Center has a really good setup.
Oh, what's that?
Special children's.
No, what's that?
Oh, there's a parking area, but, you know, it's on a slope going down to the structure, and then there's probably eight spaces for cars in front, big old sidewalk there, and that's one that's really, really important to have, people have lots of clear vision because, you know, the various kids are going to be running around, and it's not as far above. See, Jack?
Okay.
But that's just open, it's distinct from the parking area. People can park their furniture at their time, do their business, and go.
Yeah.
So it works a little well.
Great.
So I mean, I think what we want to do with this is really get back with the nursery school with this new option, and basically talk to them about, you know, is this a trade off of lots of nice green space back here versus a parking lot? Or, you know, I think we want them to make sure, we want this to work for the village, we also want to make sure it works well for them. You know, I think they're probably the experts in how do people drop off and what would make the most sense.
Well, I think often, client, parents who are clients are on the board, almost have experienced that.
Exactly, you know. So I think what we want to do as a next step is meet with the school, maybe the board members, and kind of work this out, and then come back to you with it, and, but we, that's good feedback to hear what sort of some of the concerns are.
Local parking will be for staff, as opposed to folks who are...
Yeah, right. Permanent parking, right, versus extra spaces for young people.
Right, right. Giving those things some sense, we can work it out with the layout.
Do you know yet if there will be bus, buses?
There are not buses.
There are no buses?
No.
Not even like a day trip from school to another area where a bus would be used?
Are you talking about the nursery school, about TCAT?
Well, so right now, oh, TCAT, let's save that for one second. So school buses, they're all with children, school children are home there.
So I was referring to you, there's a lot of daycare's or nursery school that are sitting there.
There's no busing.
There's a bus that comes and takes the bus.
No, and when...
Certainly during summer.
So, yeah, so the one, and that's they're changing a whole bunch of the parameters as it's just breaking out, the one bus scenario is when they get to, when they're graduating, and then they're going to go see what's like to be kindergarten, which you need the bus on 96, so you conceivably need the bus on South Street as they walk our village in chains, and do all that stuff already. But TCAT, question?
Well, I'm going to have to back up some, with the proposed entrance at 50 South, that's the best name I have for it at this point. It looks like it would be a lot better run for, you know, big bus to come through either from Pennsylvania through the south or vice versa. Already they're going to Juniper Manor. I think that would be one way to entice them. They hate having sections to their routes. They're pretty well set in their ways there, but when there's compelling reasons, and I think this would be a compelling reason to...
So, Tom, do they go, they go around Juniper Manor? No, they just go down Elm?
They go to Juniper Manor.
They do go in?
They enter and they turn around the parking lot.
Okay, okay.
They turn around to JM1, and, you know, we have the issue of, to get to Pennsylvania from Elm is, you know, sort of circuitous, but...
South Street, do you think so?
I would like it to not be the development's reason for TCAT not going. Certainly it's difficult with South, especially Pennsylvania. South, maybe they can just live around, but you leave that up to them, but I would like it to be really easy for TCAT to be able to offer service there. That's a sure way of saying it.
We did spend a fair amount of time in the last meeting on orientation of buildings and setbacks. So I guess the question is, as we approach a redesign, we did do a quick redesign, if you will, to accompany the ZBA application. We did file a copy of the planning board as well, so you can see that, but basically, all the buildings basically are common, it's a 50 feet away, they're just going about 20, 30 feet away, get closer to the road, the main building does shift up, this parking lot goes away completely. So that's kind of, I think, the major issue with orientation of buildings. We've talked about maybe moving the nursery school a little bit. Is there anything else we should be thinking about in orientation of buildings as we approach a redesign?
So there's nothing hot on my list about that hand to shake, but, John?
This doesn't have so much to do with orientation, but I don't know if anything has been done to sort of address the issue of off-screen parking for the units.
So the new, with the moving things out, the double stacking goes away because it doesn't fit anymore? So Brian did do layouts with kind of drive away slightly to the side of the house, if I'm not mistaken.
Some of them, actually, we've created some parking lots behind, so that you don't have the multiple exits and entrances onto a public road. And I mean, it may be, easiest way to discuss this might be after we, after we go to the BZA and make sure they're okay with the zoning, with the parking barriers.
Right.
But I think it does clean up a lot of the parking issues that you had mentioned.
I think other issues that were on our list are looking at space and vegetation, but that's definitely a large an issue, and shouldn't change the design really from a conceptual plan, where those are kind of fittish issues that we can address as we move towards a site plan.
Okay, I think I would also just say that it's, you know, one doesn't want to finalize a board member who is ill or attending to family emergencies, so I will reach out to them as chair and see if they had any specific comments regarding architecture, or, sorry, building location placement. I was able to catch up this break about roadway reasons, so I feel like you can, I'm super pressing, but I will double check with whoever again predicting we can add that in, so that...
Great. So we also have copies, you do have copies of the ZBA concept line?
Yeah.
So if there is anything you see on there, that doesn't really work, just give us a heads up, if you will, because we can work to try and perhaps attack that before we come back next time.
Okay.
I guess design, architecture.
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 Ooh-hoo.
Last issue I pick up with that.
Oh, thank you, Tony. Oh, thank you, Tony.
We'll bring it back next time.
Yeah, okay, good.
This is, this is by no means final selection. We're, we're showing kind of just a palette here of an idea of what these buildings might start to look like. So pick them without, without our financials. And everything's wet. Okay, so we've got a couple of different building styles on site, a multifamily building, a couple of townhouse styles. We've really tried to make an attempt to pay respect to kind of scale of a town. Two story buildings, we're using residential style, you know, double hung windows. And similar residential patterns, we've attached front porches to the, to some of the multifamily buildings. And, you know, we've added cable and roofs to kind of articulate that facade and kind of break down the scale so that, you know, as you're kind of moving along, and this would be the multifamily building, moving along the sidewalk from front building, it feels very much more of kind of a pedestrian residential scale than a large, huge multifamily building. So we tried to take some of those, those aspects of, you know, house, incorporate them here. Material wise, we're looking at things like hardy lap siding, some cementated siding and pull from the standard northeast color palette. We use, where we have stone accents, we use kind of, you know, stone that's in here.
So I'm sorry, can I get you slowed down because the architectural materials, I'm still feeling that are 19 and I heard there is no zone name. So what was the side, the material that you mentioned, hardy what?
Hardy lap siding.
Okay.
Chitso-seventaceous, you know, concrete board.
Concrete board, thank you. Okay.
That's our, that's our open goal. And, and as we kind of develop these elevations into the buildings a little bit more, we'll start to kind of determine what those actual materials are. But initial thoughts right now would be the kind of the palette.
So I'm assuming the stone stuff is a cultured stone or?
Yeah.
And have you had much experience with, is this a specific one you're looking at or is this just a generic?
This is, we would look at a bunch of different styles, but this is kind of the generic. Because we've used this on other projects and it handles really well, looks really sharp. Exactly.
How was this, who is it?
Machine made.
Machine made, there you go.
The Hancock project downtown, did it use any of these? If we were to look at that project?
The townhouses did.
The townhouses are vinyl siding. So they would have similar roof, similar palette.
Yeah.
Colors. You can, you can do these colors in vinyl siding. But, and similar porch material, which is gonna be either vinyl or like a plastic material.
For the porch?
Yeah.
Columns really, like?
And then similar windows that, that Hancock, that other project, we've got, you know, single and then we've got, you know, double.
Get some good natural weather in the units themselves.
What are duration shingles made out of?
Asphalt.
It's asphalt.
Fiber glass windows.
Oh, I thought you meant the shingles?
No, they're standards, asphalt, thirty year shingle.
Let's see asphalt shingles.
I think it's, he said fiberglass.
You can quit them. I like it.
Yeah.
It's sort of a generic name for roof shingles.
Yeah.
They used to all be asphalt and now they're mostly considered fiberglass. Hopefully, they do have some asphalt components in them.
It'd be fifty year, you know.
Yeah, you couldn't get a fifty year asphalt shingle, for instance.
They would be fifty year architectural.
Yeah.
Right.
And I'm giving you trouble putting anything. You're not gonna get asphalt.
I haven't heard of them as fiberglass.
I betcha.
I think that mean. Kind of show a couple of them.
Yeah. I mean, I think what's a bit unique about this multifamily building is that each unit has a porch on the ground floor.
Right.
You don't always see, and it's something that we specifically asked folks to create. We've never done a multifamily building that has a, every single unit on the first floor has their own like front porch, which is really nice because you can, you know, you can enter from the inside from your hallway, but then you have this space outside that fronts on the street now. Because we're moving the building up, we're getting rid of that, that parking lot. So at least on the street side, this is really gonna feel like a row house kind of, you know, individual row houses. And, and on the, this is actually the opposite side.
Courtyard.
This is sort of the courtyard and the community room, which will have this, you know, really open feeling where you can open out onto a large patio and people can have outdoor parties and events and just sit outside and, you know, have their coffee in the morning. But also have this indoor space that has a little kitchen, kitchenette and also has tables and chairs. So you can kind of get a sense of some of the, some of the views here.
But, you know, kind of that, that row house feel, you know, so we provide a cable end for the door margin units. And then.
Yeah, these, I mean, these, this is the, these are, this is the big building.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, and then powder stone or accents?
Yeah, so you can see those.
That, that doesn't, that foundation?
It would happen here.
And is that chimney purely aesthetic or is that hiding? What is that?
Nope, it's, it would be aesthetic. It's kind of like a water table at the bottom.
No, the chimney picture or center? That's just aesthetic?
Yeah.
They probably got, uh, put the syrup agent or something from the boiler furnace by accident.
Okay.
Because I don't see a lot of contractions in the roof shown.
I mean, at this point, we're, we're early on the schematic. We're, you know, engaging with technical engineering to determine where all our rock is coming in.
Yeah.
You know, in, in kind of paying off the residential scale and kind of setting between chimney on the outside of the building.
So for scale, the structure, the, the middle one with the chimney on it, what would that represent in terms of units?
In this section in here, this, this would not have any.
Has a community center.
But this is, you know, offices, there's an office, there's a computer room, there's a laundry room, a community room. Some general building functions which support the rest of the city.
So one to either the right or the left of that, what would that represent in terms of?
Number of units?
Yeah.
There's sixteen per side. So eight per floor. And a series of mixes of one student with two threes.
So the, the bottom rendering sort of shows what a townhouse would look like. And this is a three unit townhouse.
Yep.
And then, as we've said sort of a number of times with this to re-mention.
Could we possibly put the three unit up on the things that you're worried to see?
Yep, so that we have two different townhouse styles. This is the other style here. And this is, that's the style.
Asta.
This is what the rendering is.
Okay.
So that's one of the styles that we have in place. The other one is this, which has kind of two cable ends again. It's three units, one, two and three.
Yeah.
Two story townhouse style.
Yeah, okay. So let's put this, can we put this color one up?
Yep.
Sorry, and can we get a little bit of an angle so I can make sure John can still see that?
So the various trim components, I've heard you say the columns and the railings would be of vinyl material. How about the case and that sort of?
The, the case boards you're saying?
Yeah.
Likely to be part of our product.
Okay.
You know, the, the thing about these is we tried to build them for, for dirt, for, um.
Low maintenance.
Low maintenance, exactly. Things that have long, long lifetime, more.
Were these the only, were there other townhouse concepts in earlier?
Early rounds, there were.
What's the other one that you showed? These are the other, the other version of the townhouses.
But these were the only two that have been all on, or were there more?
I think we had some other.
It seems like I'm remembering that there were more.
I think what happened was when we went to the one long, long building, we ended up dropping out some of the townhouse varieties. But the other thing I was gonna mention is that then there's a whole number of lots on the site that are gonna be built by individuals through Claudia that are gonna look completely different. But we thought we'd just give you a sense of, you know, what the townhouse.
Here's how you picked this one. It doesn't look like a, you know, the other concept we reached, like a very traditional kind of house looking. This looks, I mean, it's not, it doesn't look like anything that I've seen in the village, you know? It looks less like a house.
Location dormers and shit is.
I mean, it's interesting, but it doesn't really look like a, like your traditional house, and the other one does. And I'm just curious, like, why that was. I was just gonna say institutional.
Um, Lewis, yeah, this is like a tape on a bungalow. Do you think about like arts and crafts sort of? This was a, a large bungalow of what you would consider sort of with the two dormers. I mean, what we thought, the way we could break this down, we were even talking a little bit about if we didn't have one roof and we had sort of a roof here and a roof here and a roof here, you might start to break this mass down a little bit. It might also feel like a little bit more individ, each one had their individual kind of, their own front porches. And that might help the institutional level a little bit.
Definitely. Also, because you know, it's a bit of a big, I know porches, I guess, may, might have to be plastic in the modern world, but it's just. Um, we're gonna, I said maybe, but let's look at the schematic, can we, of the, so it's different angles, so instead of the color, three one.
It has, it has kind of a, a great camp.
It does feel a little great camp, yeah. But we don't want it to happen. We do have in the townhouses, these, there are some eight frame structures, but in the village.
So it sounds like some, breaking up some of the mass in this particular design.
Which we can achieve. I mean, that's, I mean, again, it's very early concept.
I just think, I mean, again, just trying to, any, any way that we can kind of meld this in with what's already in the village, I think is a good thing.
Yep.
And just, I don't know if it's time. Yeah, I have noticed on some of your other projects and in some of the, the images that were in earlier packages that you sent to us, a lot of, you know, the porches that you've been talking about in some of your other projects are little. Kind of just like a, you know, maybe big enough for like one chair, but then you can't get out your door. So these have bigger porches.
Yes.
The drawings that are here, and I'm just curious to know, like, are all, all the porches throughout the project slated to be at least that big or if not bigger?
Yeah.
I mean, because what's, what's the point of adding a porch if you can't sit on porch with a couple of people and no one's just gonna?
Yeah, they're all set up now, so you could have two chairs and a little, you know, coffee table.
I mean, I would just encourage, like, if there's any way, any place that you can make it a little bigger and a little bit more inviting, like, that might work.
Yeah. Yeah.
And I do think that institutional, not to beat the bungalow to death, but it's the big, the big oak flat overhanging over the entrance feels very much like the Napa on the bottom. The Napa, yes.
Okay.
Well, how many times would this one be repeated in your?
There's only one of these that come on. So.
There's actually now they're one of them.
There's one.
Now it's two of the other one.
Yep.
I do have one, I thought this isn't really about architecture, but there's the three walkways up there.
Yep.
And I think that kind of contributes to that, to the like sort of off look of it. I mean, is there any way to, if you've got three entrances, maybe have one walkway and then have the sidewalk wrapped around?
Yep.
I don't know.
I feel that those is, they take the most direct route.
Wait, but they're gonna take the most direct route. Like, people are always, that's what you're asking?
I don't think they'll have a trench in here.
And who shovels it? So shared walkways for individual homes? I don't know.
Well, in this case, where I shove one of these, if these are rentals.
These are the rentals, okay.
But now if this was a for sale and each one of these was gonna be sold, the homeowner would be responsible for shoveling their walk. And so we probably want to keep it this way so that they know that which one is theirs.
So this guy over here starts shoveling the stone, this guy's sidewalk.
Well, we'd like to think that guy's gonna shovel that guy's sidewalk. That's the thing.
Okay. So we were, you only mentioned talking about the architectural building elements and not interior building elements. We're still not talking about those, insulation.
Oh, the inside, the inside of the building?
Yeah.
The actual floor plans or?
I just maybe can't say it too many times about just the notion of like making sure they're built as really well as they can be. And insulation has been, as far as one of the other meetings, a complaint budget of manners you addressed was built in the eighties, but those of us who have shared common walls, like, it's just so much better to do it here.
Yeah, so we tend to do, you know, sound bath in both walls, all of our sound bath.
Okay.
Sound insulation between the units. We air seal all of the, all the units. We make sure that we meet or see the energy code requirements. So we, we create good tight envelopes, well, well constructed buildings. You know, and actually in a lot of the projects that we've done with IHS, we have great compliments for people, you know, saying, I can't.
And we might end up with some more specific building material codes when that.
I don't know if you're aware of the push code is very well gonna be coming into effect in the near future. Something to think about, but yeah, IHS generally does a great job sealing it, so like.
What's even push code?
It's an enhanced energy code. You know, they're trying to figure out fancy names for it, but they're basically just raising the standards even more than the 2016 supplement, so.
Did you get a push present if you did a good job?
A push pen, a little push present. I'll, I'll give a gold stars.
So I think we have covered a lot of the issues we plan to cover.
Okay.
I think at this point, we've covered all of the major issues. You've given us a lot of feedback. I think though, kind of big outstanding issues are gonna be what the DVA decides to do.
Right.
That will obviously affect many of the design issues we're talking about, of the parking and setback perspective. And I think the DPW and the road sections that Lance has created and what we've put together and have an L D and discussion and equipment. Those are kind of the, the big main issues. Everything else, I think we've had a lot of feedback on. And we're in a position, I think, with our group and my team to say, I think we can come back now. We've got enough feedback on everything. We've got Lance's comments, we've watched track. We kind of now come back with a revolve.
And we already had discussed with the village that it could be, that they were content to make it a village road provided that it met those renders on South Street. That's already a discussion that's happened.
It has, but we'll obviously confirm that.
Okay. Okay, okay. And the architectural principles are gonna be addressed again. This was a preliminary introduction of that conversation. And so that anyone who's worried in, in the audience and feels like things have just happened, it, it's that we're having a design conversation. Two variants have to be met, final approval, tons more questions, two missing board members. There is no thing that happened except more information as far as I'm concerned at this meeting. And I'd say we're gonna get today. Is that the thing that's gonna be arrested? Okay, so. Okay, so Hannah or John, do you have any other questions for the applicant at this time or other things you wanted to discuss with them? To consider. You're next. Okay. Right, and again, I guess it's just not, we can't be ignorant enough that the WAD litigation system has been identified several times as being dependent on the final design and that there will be extensive detail into how that, how that. and that there would be extensive detail, um, into how that, how that works.
It's actually quite a literary design. We're, we're, we're working through the sizing of it now.
Yeah, great.
To make sure it's accurate.
Yeah.
And it's gonna be.
Right, but if this changed and the drainage, and do we need more forest samples from the, and the road width and the curving, the curving and, great, um, okay. Great, okay, so that's good. I think that, um, we can now move into a period of, of public comments. Um, and I will just reiterate, because I think that it's been frustrating, um, and I just want to say with a gentle respectful term that I can, tone rather, that I can, that the planning board is not be a question and answer board for the public, it is not a lecture board. It is an extension of a review process for your village board. So while it can be frustrating to not have question, your, your questions answered, our, our mission here, we don't have to, um, open up public comment every meeting. But, but our point is to, to get your information, to weigh it, to have it be part of the conversation and the thought, though it might not be answered. Your questions might not be answered, and, uh, that's monumentally frustrating, I, I, I get that, but they might. And they might be answered not in your timeframe, they might come up the next meeting. But to that end, if you do have some specific questions, we do have two, um, village officers, one, one body now. We have the zoning officer and the codes officer, who, who is here to make an appointment, to, to answer some of these specific questions you might have. Um, and who could get you access to the town planner if you had some specific questions that, and, and, you know, again, they would have to answer to their own agenda. But those really are resources there, so no one is trying to say the wrong thing to you or not say anything to you. Actually, I am very much trying to not say the wrong thing to you, which is why I don't wanna overstep the bound of the purvey of this board um, by answering questions inappropriately through email. Um, so that said, let's hear more good public comment if we have some, and Tammy, were you able to put up a sign up sheet I can check?
I did not.
That's okay, we have, um, some folks from the fellow ground, it'll be fifteen minutes, who would like to speak. And let's get our clock ready, so we don't short anyone, anytime, it's page thirty-five, and so we'll open, um, public comment.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Meyer of the forty-one Elm Street. And, um, as a village stakeholder, um, not actively inviting to participate in this, um, process. I'd like to give you a view of the outside of how it sounds. And this meeting sounds like you're dealing with a lot of details, and it doesn't seem like the big issues have been addressed at all. For two years, we've been asking questions about environmental sustainability, we've watched the process that was superficial. We've asked about tax abatement issues, we're, we're landowners, we're property tax owners, I pay school tax, I have no children for three years. I'm a stakeholder, I'm seriously interested in affordable housing, I think we should reuse property. We have a blighted main street that's perfectly suited for access for people who, who, uh, can join the community. We have a wonderful green space that's part of our comprehensive plan, we are supposed to be protecting that comprehensive plan. We have a zoning code, I would ask this board to demand development that meets current zoning. The issue that you have variances putting up to you, and that you're even moving to talking about architecture and curbing seems totally irrelevant. For two years, we've wanted answers about these questions and variances. Two and a half years ago, I stood up and said, why are you even considering a variance on Pennsylvania, two and a half years ago? And we're talking about shingles. We are stakeholders, there has been no community involvement here, we have been disabused of the privilege of being a part of this. I was at a meeting when you were consulting with the board, the, uh, consulting company that was, was going to work with our village to come up with a new zoning plan. What do they advocate? Community engagement, protecting our assets. This doesn't meet any of the zoning or the comprehensive plan, we should demand that it meets our zoning code. Why are you dancing around these variances? There's no, there's no, there's no reason to do that. We should ask for a development that meets our county, our, uh, current zoning plan. And the fact that we're revising our plan is going into it all backwards. That's my comment. I'm really disappointed, I'm also disappointed about not addressing environmental sustainability, having an interesting and forward-looking architectural plan, doing something that's visionary, doesn't address anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, is there another comment? Yes, uh, can you start?
Okay, I'm Joan Garner, and I live at sixty-five South Street. And my family has lived in this neighborhood, in the same house, this neighborhood for seven years. And make no mistake about it, it's a real neighborhood. People care about each other, people are there when we need them, people share their joys and their sorrows together. Now, you guys talk about creating a neighborhood, you're talking about a neighborhood that's gonna replace our neighborhood. When you try to shoehorn this giant thing into that spot, you will become the neighborhood, and we will become the outliers. And we will just have to take whatever you send us, all the, all the wild animals that get displaced, all the water that runs off that, all the traffic, all the noise, anything that you want, we're gonna have to take it, and we didn't have any type of choice in this. So I implore you, planning board, to do your duty and protect us. Protect our property values, and protect our aesthetic, our aesthetic values. And just do what you're supposed to be doing, you're not supposed to be letting them tell you what, what they're gonna do, you're supposed to tell them what they're supposed to do for us. They're here to make money, we're here because we love our village, it's two different things. And they seem to be the ones who are getting all the attention here. So I think that she's ashamed to just pay lip service to all of us. And something bad is very gonna happen, is gonna happen, the neighborhood will suffer a very strange deaths, it will suffer death by planning board. It will be you, it's in your power to fix this, and I wish you would step up and do it, thank you.
Thank you. Is there another comment?
Sugar Palm, South Street, I was just wondering, um, how important is the comprehensive plan for a process like this? You know, because in the comprehensive plan, it said that the thing nobody really wanted was big apartment building. And then this is what we're getting, so, I'm not a lawyer, but I was wondering, why do we have this?
So that's a really good question, and I think, I feel like I wanna send some words to that cigarette, which is, um, the comprehensive plan is the mission statement, right? It was generated from the community, um, it's, it's, um, a little old now. Just to acknowledge that, but I'm not sure that you were able to attend the meeting where we talked about as a board. Whether or not we thought the scale of this project was in keeping with the comprehensive plan, and we cited the scope of Juniper Manor and, um, pre-existing other structures, so it was also cited the scope of, um, the school. And so I, I would say that we, you could go back and look at that, but, but, uh, definitely, um, the comprehensive plan is, is the mission statement. And is something that addressed, and will continue to keep in the forefront, I appreciate you reminding us of that. Um, okay, anybody else? Tom?
Tom, I think, someone, someone that's got, was at the meeting last night, uh, all sounds wonderful, but we're not doing any of it, uh, here, in my view. And variances from how I understand it, I mean, our goal should be, and I believe your goal should be, as our representatives, to make any kind of development, not just this one, comply with our, uh, zoning requirements, the comprehensive plan, or even explaining as to why. We've always, uh, we've seen some variances coming out, I have some questions about those, particularly I couldn't break those fast enough, so.
Sure.
Perhaps I can chat with these guys afterwards, but, um. Variants would ask for, seems to me, and I think there's some backing for it, you should, you folks should be asking, okay, but what benefit does that variance bring to the village? Uh, this should be a two-way street, it seems not to be that. Uh, last night was a, kind of a stirring example of what we hope to be. And again, given, uh, that we are in the process of comprehensive plan and zoning review. Very careful about, uh, the current zoning, because that's the current law of the people, and that's the law. Without some benefit or any of these variances, uh, before we enact something that we can't reflect. Uh, these will become the, the precedents for the village, there's no doubt about that, in my mind, anyway. Uh, I don't know, where am I going, forgive me, uh, I'd, if I, if I made, it'd be better afterwards to ask these folks if they're willing about, I just couldn't get one variant.
Well, I, I wanna, I'll say a few things about variants, but yeah, I mean, I'm sure they can speak for themselves as individuals, and you can have access to them as they choose. But, but let's say, um, just to be clear, um, the two variances that, that the applicant is currently searching, seeking for, uh, one is, um, optional. It's, it's a variance for setback, which is not required, um, so that isn't to change anything, they could have actually presented in a final platform fifty-foot setbacks as the code, or as the, as the code suggests, code wants. But we as a board recognize that that's actually unique, and that most of the village does not have fifty-foot setbacks, that that itself is a, is a unique thing. And so we said, great, further, and then, and then, and we can all look at the minutes and the video of the last meeting. So let's look at that, and then let's also say, if you pull it in and have twenty-five feet, then you're making a more, a community, more sense of community and, and preserving green space, however, we, we don't, we don't make variances, so that, that's for the BZA to decide, and they can say no. Um, and the nursery school, that's, that's the one real thing, you're absolutely right, if, if determined by the zoning officer.
We don't have a nursery school, it's a daycare center, isn't it?
No, and then there's another thing, so that can get hashed out in front of the, um, BZA. It's the, it's that whole question of, if I'm a restaurant and I got a catering license, am I suddenly a caterer? So, it, it's that, again, that, this board, for good or bad, is not determining that, that is something that's gonna be determined by the BZA. But, but that is a variance that they're seeking, that, that they would have to, if they wanted to build the nursery school, and that's, that's up to them. And that meeting is on Monday, and I don't know if they have other comment or not, but, um, I'll be there.
Did I understand that, did I hear someone say there's no double backs parking now, that's what's?
I believe that that, yeah, that's what they said, they were planning on their designs to change the, to change the design for that.
The setback, I wanna still, I'm telling.
Yeah.
So I guess generally speaking, my feeling is that you folks should be asking on every one of these variances, what does that do for us?
Right.
You can go pick through a hundred and fifty-year-old house, you know, in the village, and say, everything should be like that. So comparing this to a Juniper Manor, you know, maybe isn't exactly a one-for-one of us. There should be a quintessential quote in this kind of discussion, I would think, and, uh, I've not seen it in two and a half years, so. And I'm not sure about that Pennsylvania Avenue variance either.
Oh, oh, right, okay.
That seems to be, uh, maybe imaginary. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Um, I think we have time, oh no, we have more, uh, we have time for more comments, Ms. Rachel, I saw your hand first.
I just wanted to say, I appreciate, um, the comments that are being made from the floor, and.
Sorry, what's your name?
Ray, Rachel, can you? Eighteen Lake Street, um, I appreciate the comments that are coming from the floor, and I feel differently, and I appreciate the work you're doing, and I feel like it is a diligent process. And I, I still believe that this kind of project will bring us forward as a village.
Thank you. Ms. Kathy, is that your hand next?
Kathy, Thundera, thirty-one Lake Street, I just wanna say about variances, other communities that I've lived in, the, the test is not what good will the variance do, but what harm would it do if you provided it? So you can ask for a variance, it may, may only benefit the, the applicant, but if it does no harm to anybody else, why not? That's sort of a different approach to, to dealing with variances.
Thank you, Janice.
Um, yeah, Janice, we started thirteen South Street, um, there are a couple of concerns that I have. I live in a very small lot in the village and have stacked parking, stacked parking is not an ideal thing. And if these are gonna be one, two, and three bedroom homes, I would assume there's gonna be better than one car. So reducing the parking, I understand the reason for the purpose, um, surface, but, um, it also creates a parking problem in the neighborhood, and there's an after parking. The next thing, um, you know, with the porches on the front, you know, I have porches seventy inches from the sidewalk. I can hear people's conversations on the sidewalk in my living room, that's not particularly ideal. Um, I've seen the same, um, buildings in the tire development in Santa Monica County, so I'm not so sure this is unique for our village. I think it's a, it's kind of standard for NHS. And that, my concern is people have stuff, just places, there's no place to put people's stuff. So what happens is they put it on the road, and I think that really makes not a very nice-looking neighborhood when there are stuff on the, the neighborhood, you know, right, and for everybody to see, all of your bicycles, your motorcycles, your whatever. I did notice in the tire development that they had these big cages in the back, wired cages, very up high, so people could put their bicycles, et cetera. But that's not particularly attractive, anyway, so I think that because people have stuff, there should be more consideration for storage for the, for people to live there.
Thank you, Janice, and actually, I remember now we talked about that, and I care more with, but that should definitely go into the redesign, um, the stuff, where people's stuff is gonna go, storage sheds and all that. Okay, thank you. Um, was there another hand, Santana told, oh, yes.
Bonnie DeSambre, Pennsylvania Avenue, I worry about the traffic, I never felt it was addressed correctly, or the report wasn't done, that's my opinion. I can't imagine, uh, city bus coming down Pennsylvania Avenue at that corner, the people got lost in the ditch, the ditch is so deep. And my biggest thing is, our water system is brand new, it's the first time I've had groundwater ever, living here, twice, and the drainage system. And my whole thing was, we wanted homes in there for our people, small homes, bi-levels, we were all excited. And now we have this one structure, it's not that we don't want it, why does it have to be right there, right where it's all congested? And I feel just the water system is a big no, we don't know what's gonna happen. And I've said in my letters before, we have no idea how many more changes are gonna be made, and once you stop, there's no turn back. It's just very scary. But I, I appreciate you listening to them and having them try to adjust everything, but this, to my knowledge, was not the original plan. I actually feel duped, I don't know if you guys have, I thought we came with the development from Claudia, to have the homes with one in there, not these big huge rentals. And we can have them, we can have them outside of town a little bit, still on it, where everybody's paying for it, and not just village people. When things go wrong, I'm swampland, and I'll be being fair to the people we're putting in there, it's swampland. What kind of places are gonna hold up to that? And people say to me, well, you're on it too, well, I paid a lot of money to drain my land, once I moved there, I don't wanna have to pay for someone else's. But it's really disturbing, if you're a village person paying village taxes, it's easy across town, but some of these people don't realize that their taxes at the school will go up too. So, just, I appreciate you listening to me.
Thank you, Bonnie. I think we could do one more, there was another? Okay, um.
Should I go through your comments?
No, I love you. Um, but, um, but again, that said, I threw out that you are open and available to the public by appointment, he really, really is. Um, and, and that might even be a more comfortable place for you to, you know, that your codes and zoning officer is approachable for you to have a conversation or email. You can answer your email as well, and Tammy can help make those appointments if Tom is out of office. Okay, so that concludes public comment, um, do we have any old business we wanna discuss at this time? Okay, uh, any new business? Anything business? No, okay, um. Okay, um, so I have the motion to, second. Thank you, uh, all folks, I mean, all things.